We'll go ahead and get the meeting up and going officially. I know it's just a little after 4:30. We're trying a new thing. This is the first time we've had the work session in the conference room so that we can kind of foster more conversation with the board. And we'll see how it goes. Of course, the first time we do it, we have several people from the public that came tonight, and this is the first time we've actually came in here to do this. So we'll monitor, and if we need to move, we'll move the future ones back into a larger room and go from there. First item we've got on the agenda is to go through, we've got a list of this planning and development updates. This is so that the planning and development office can kind of give us the rezoned land use intensity changes that will be heard at our next board meeting. I know Ashley, I think, is prepared to do tonight, but it's a good chance to introduce Mr. Charles Reese. Charles Reese is here for his first day as the planning and development director. So Charles has just joined the team and is in here. We'll have a release all prepared for you tomorrow to send over to the progress, and I'm sure he's gonna want to get a picture of you before you can get away tonight. So that way he'll have a picture to go with the release. But I want to make sure to welcome you to the team. We're glad to have you here with us.
Glad to be here.
And Ashley, who's serving as his assistant director, has kind of worked on preparing the package, and since it's his first day, we feel like it would be a little bit mean to throw him in to present something he's only seeing for the first time. So Ashley, I'm gonna turn it over to you and let you walk through which ones are coming up on the next meeting.
Thank you, thank you. So the first one that we've got coming up is Donna Jackson. She is off of Pinco Road. They were at the meeting, Walkable actually acted as her agent. They've got five acres of an 8.86 acre tract that they're proposing to go from ag to small ag. Their intent is to sell that five acres and the remaining three acres will be combined with an adjoining tract that she owns. And then you see on the next slides, you've got two different maps. One of them is the plan map that shows the location and the surrounding structures. And then the second one is that zoning map. So the tract that's right below the one that starred on the zoning map, that is what will be combined with the remaining three acres. So it will stay a conforming ag tract. On this one, after reviewing the application of the five acre portion to be rezoned from ag to small ag, staff recommended approval of the rezon request. And then when it went before the planning commission, they voted unanimously to accept the staff recommendation.
Anybody have any questions on that one?
No.
It's kind of straightforward. Can we keep them all that simple?
Yeah.
I'll try. That's on y'all. The next one we've got is Kenny and Kathy Sears. They're on Carlin Road, and they've got 13 acres to two five acres that has been zoned as R previously. It was a subdivision that was divided up that were all large lots. Their intent is to take that SR to ag with their plans to build a single family home and have lab stuff on the property. And then as you can see on the next one, it is in what came from a small subdivision of just large SR tracts, and it's got some ag and stuff that surrounds it. On that one, we reviewed the applicant's request to go from SR to ag, staff recommended approval, and the planning commission also voted unanimously to approve and accept the staff recommendation.
Any questions? All right, you started off good with Tisa.
All right, easy. So the next one is a conditional use permit request for an event venue. This is one that it's the second time coming back before the planning commission because they changed a few things about their presentation. Their intent is to have a conditional use to operate an event venue along the farm winery that they are already permitted to do. You can see on the map that it is surrounded by ag. They actually own a couple parcels right there together, and they plan on doing their winery and everything on the same tract, to my understanding. We did propose conditions on this, and those are listed out there. There were several, including that it would be close to the public during weddings, number of weddings are limited to 12 annually, the attendance will be based on what the fire marshal sets, shuttles will be available for the weddings, because they had said that, you know, a primary concern was the road and the traffic, and so shuttles was a way to mitigate that, as well as the sound mitigation. And then we also added on there that if approved, it would also take away all other things that are permitted under a conditional use with ag. We just listed those out just to make sure we were checking all of our boxes there. So after reviewing the application, we voted to, or the staff recommended to approve it with those conditions that I just read through. And the planning commission, they voted four in favor and one against to accept that staff recommendation.
All right, so let's open this one up for questions.
Yeah, so concerning the shuttles, do you know where they're gonna shuttle to and from?
They, and they had a, during the planning commission meeting, they had a big presentation, and that was not something that they mentioned during it at all. So I'm not a person on that one, but I can definitely find out.
Did you receive any other complaints or concerns from surrounding property owners after that here?
Nope, I didn't hear anything else on any of that. I know that, like I said, some of their biggest concerns was the road, and I guess they've been in contact with you some. They had said, I don't know for sure, but that was just talking about ways to mitigate the traffic, and that was, the shuttles was one, to be able to kind of cut down on the number of cars in and out. So it was just one grid bin and then one grid out.
So Kirk's gonna paint the road?
Yeah, that's me.
So I went out to look at the road.
Was gonna say, where is the road?
And to look, and there is, there is right of way, the majority of the way through. It's one of those that's kind of an odd road that when you look on the deeds, because Wes pulled the deed information, and the majority of them have a full right of way width that goes through. But when you hit a narrow strip in a curve, those deeds only give what we call ditch to ditch, which is a 40-foot right of way, which gives you the road plus the ditches that are on the outside. Problem's where the houses are in that one section. There's really no way they can sign over anymore right of way, so there's no way to widen all the way through. You could actually do work on an approach, and you could do work on the follow-up on the other side, but there is a small stretch that when that road was built, the deeds on the property don't give full width. So what's there is the widest that it can be. Now, could it be improved on a little bit? Yes, there's ways that we can improve on the surface, but we can't improve on the width for the head-to-head traffic. And that's me going out there. Kirk may have a better...
Even where we do have the right of way, I mean, and I've explained this to the lady that applied for it, even where we do have the right of way, if you widen that road and put the ditches like they need to be, I mean, it's encroaching on their yards or parking places. I mean, these houses are fairly close to the road, and it's not gonna be real popular. I mean, of course, you're free to do whatever you want to with it, but that's not gonna be very popular out through there. And...
So the road now, is it wide enough for two cars to go side by side or not, in the narrow part that you're talking about?
It's a stretch.
It's close.
It's real, it's real narrow once you turn onto Tabitha. Gregory's a bigger road. Tabitha's were, you know, they're at the end of Tabitha, and once you turn on Tabitha, it's rather narrow out through there.
It's probably, what, 200 yards once you turn on Tabitha to get to their drive? And there's the one hill that you cross to go, and the hill is where it narrows in. So when you reach the blind portion is the most narrow portion of that road. And there's just not a, like, we've looked at it and discussed it and tried to look at how could, how could that be improved? And because of where the houses are, there's not a whole lot of ways to change the width. I mean, you might could pick up a foot or two, but the amount it would take to pick up a foot or two, which doesn't really solve the issue, becomes a challenge. There's a chair in here if you'd like to sit. I hate if you stand at the door. Sorry. So that one's the biggest challenge is just the location. I think once you get onto their property, their property has pretty good layout in terms of separating to where it's isolated. You know what I mean, for noise and for all the other concerns that some of the places have is just getting to Tabitha Drive creates a challenge.
With the number of weddings being loaded at 12, who enforces that?
That, that would be something that our office would essentially have to enforce, but it would be a matter of us, because we don't have a process in place right now to enforce that. That would be something that we would have to sit down and look at to decide who, you know, is it the marshal's office? Is it really us?
So it'd be fun to come break up with 13, 12.
I know. I know that a bunch of that, too.
Only title.
A bunch of that will probably fall in line, because they'll have their alcohol licenses and stuff with, will be able to kind of monitor their sales and stuff. So that will, that'll be a big part of that.
Would you all want to be presented with logistic plans of pickup, drop-off?
If we could get that information from them, if y'all could email that out to the board so that we get an answer to that. I know that, I mean, you've got Kirk on the road side of things that we've already discussed. If you've got follow-up questions that you wanted to send directly to him, if you guys felt the need to follow up on that more. But I think that the shuttle, if there's a valid way, but they're gonna have to have public access from where they're gonna shuttle from, and they're gonna have to have an agreement with who it is that they're gonna use to shuttle.
And I don't know if it was them being the ones that are gonna run their own shuttle service for the venue, or if they plan on doing a third party, but I'll check into that and make it like on that.
Well, how big was the venue gonna be?
It's not very large. It's small. It's a lard, a lard style.
Something like that.
And I think that they had said initially in their, in their first time that they had applied, they went forward to planning commission, that it was like maximum of like 50 people. It was gonna be very small.
It's not gonna be a large crowd, constant flow of traffic. It's smaller than, and I'll use Cairnview as an example, because I know that's one that also is on a dirt road, that it's on another part of the county. It's smaller than that facility there with the proposal that they've put in place on there. But at the same time, if you're gonna try to shuttle, you've gotta make sure that's pre-arranged, because I think that there's been some issues with the unofficial shuttling where people were carpooling from Church Park and lots and things of that nature to go to some of the others that they didn't have pre-approved. So I think if we can get that answered, that would be a good answer to that.
And I think too, her, one of her focuses with doing the micro weddings is that the wineries aren't gonna be generating traffic, and so it wouldn't be really added traffic to being, you know, the days that they do whole, the weddings or the events or whatever, it's not gonna be the wine traffic on top of the event traffic, which is why it was added in there that it would be close to the public. So it's not wine traffic, and then on top of that, you've got wedding traffic.
Right, and I think that's, you make a good point, that, I don't know if y'all call it, in ag, it's already permitted to where they can have the winery. So that this is, this is not gonna prevent all traffic. This is just for the added venue location that would go with it. They're gonna have the traffic regardless under what their current zoning is, that we're not necessarily resolving 100%. This is just the added overflow that could be a part of it. I do, I do commend them for reaching out in between the first time they presented to their neighbors and to the board and to the office, and they've, they've definitely been working to try to do the right thing. There's just a difficulty in the road that goes to it, and there's just a, that's just a reality, this thing.
And supposedly they have a lot of support from some of the neighbors around.
Yeah.
I don't know that that's all the neighbors, but they do have some support.
You can tell, I mean, just how much they've done between meeting one, before the planning commission and meeting two, the way that the neighborhood responded.
Do you have any more on that one?
I'm good.
Okay.
Maybe this one will be easy, too. So the next one is Christopher Joyner. He's on Bryant Road. He has a existing non-conforming ag parcel. It's 9.03 acres. He is currently proposing to go from ag to rural residential. His intent is to break it up into a three acre tract and a six acre tract with what he plans is to be one house on each, but with the potential for, I think it's a mother-in-law or a grandma, to move into an additional dwelling that would be added on one of the tracks. So maximum three houses. As you can see, there's the location map that shows that it is surrounded by all ag except for across the growth. There's a good bit of rural residential in that area. And with that, when we reviewed the applicant's request to rezon the property, the staff had recommended approval of the rezon request, and then the planning commission actually voted four in favor and two against to deny the staff recommendation, which was initially approval. So they actually voted, they denied what we had said would be an approval.
All right, so I have a question on that one. I know that they were looking for two of them to be larger tracts, but one of them was needed to be smaller, and I think that was where the concern was with the higher density zoning for the total parcel in the way that it was split.
Yeah.
Is it potential to split this and to rezon a portion of it as to one and another portion of it to the higher density?
So I spoke with Mr. Joyner earlier today, and he had said that, you know, because it's something where we had talked initially when he had applied to see if he was interested in maybe going estate residential, because the smallest lot that he's looking for is that three acre tract. He's looking at doing the three acre tract and the six acre tract. And I said, you know, given that you really wanna do just three structures in the long run, would you, would that be something you're interested in? And he, he said, and Charles may be able to correct me on this, but what I gathered is that his idea of why he doesn't wanna go that route is because environmental health, he didn't wanna have to have two separate septic systems. So on the six acre tract where he plans on putting the two houses, which one would be temporary for the grandmother or whoever to stay in, he wanted to be able to tie that into the septic at the main house. And I think that he may be a bit confused on that, because I actually, I checked with environmental health, and I know that that's not our scope of what we do, you know, in planning and development, but I asked if that's something that they do as far as granting one septic permit for two houses on the same lot? And they had clarified that each house has to have its own septic system. So in talking to him, I, you know, I'm like, is it something where you would be willing, based on how the planning commission meeting turned out, would you be willing to go to a state residential? And he had rounded about and basically said that he would be willing to take the six acres to small ag and the three acres to rural residential, but that's still...
That's still three lots.
Is gonna get him into the same thing where he's still got, yeah, the one lot that will have to have the two septic systems if he builds the two houses on it.
Can he build two houses on one small ag without much acreage, or is...
He cannot. So he, his plan with that, if he did small ag, six acres, he would have one house on that, and then on the rural residential tract, that would be three acres, he would have two houses on that, which would be conforming.
Two separates, correct?
Yeah. So I think he is just a little bit confused on what environmental health, which they would have to clarify with him anyway, on what they would allow or not allow. But I think that that's his hesitancy in not going to a state residential. But I did address it. He just didn't want to.
Do y'all have any other questions? I believe that's one that just having a follow-up conversation with him might be beneficial to...
And I can get y'all his contact information.
Okay.
Vice versa, I can send him yours.
Do you want to tackle?
Yeah, I've already spoke to him once. I'll call him back.
Awesome. Follow up with him on that. Okay. Anything else on that particular?
All right, so the next...
I see how you set this up. You started off with the ones that were easy, and then you got more complicated.
It just happened to fall that way. So the next one, and I feel like I always say this wrong, is Elizabeth and Etowahgo Marsenal. They are on Salem Church Road, and their total tract is 247 acres, but they are looking at taking a 10 acre portion of that from ag to rural residential. And their intent of doing that is to create four two acre tracts for the construction of single family homes on those. So on the zoning map, you can see, and I tried to put the star roughly where they're actually planning on cutting those out, and I think, yep, it's in here, too. So you can see it is gonna be the strip that does actually touch Salem Church Road. That's where they plan on kind of divvying that up, and you can see that it's ag, and they're surrounded by rural residential, too, there, with a little bit of highway distance down the road. And then you can see the actual proposed layout where they have the lots coming off of Salem Church Road. And then there's also a few pictures of the houses that they propose to be built on the lots if approved. And the overall recommendation from staff on this was to approve the request for the 10 acre tract to go from ag to rural residential, and the planning commission also voted unanimously five to zero with the staff recommendation to accept the staff recommendation.
One question I have, if they're taking all of what they have that touches Salem Church Road, how are they gonna prevent land blocking the...
So we're leaving, you can see that Knollwood Drive, I believe they're leaving that so it maintains access to the back track. So it's just that one, two, three, four, if you can see this.
Yeah, I just looking at the Q public map, Knollwood kinda goes away from the...
Oh, yeah, that's kinda question, isn't it?
I know their drawing shows Knollwood right along the property line, but the Q public shows it...
They also own this tract and this tract that come all the way down and tie into Top Mine on the other side.
Yes, yeah, we talked about that earlier.
They just have to draw their line.
But they, the way that it's laid out, yeah, the way that it's laid out, it is proposed to where they will still have access on further remaining track.
Okay.
And I'll confirm the widths and everything on that type of, they've got 60 foot at least in there.
Is that our water there?
Any other questions on that? And I know that Mary has posted the video from the planning commission meeting up on her site on Pickens. We haven't had a chance yet to look at it before we get to the, to the meeting, so you can see any public ordinance on each of them. I went through, watched it again just recently, so it is there for you guys to look at. All right, Ashley, thank you.
Thank you.
Charles, thank you for being here with us. Glad to have you onboard.
Question on that last one, do they have to see if the city will fly in with water before that happens and just go through the zoning and then that comes on the back end?
Yeah.
There's a line that runs right along that strip.
Where Salem Church Road?
Yeah, it runs on that side.
Where the boughs is that add on Salem Church Road was first time?
Closer to 515, close to the farm, the...
Airport.
Yeah, near the airport.
Yeah, I think there's a line that goes down to the old racetrack, maybe?
Yeah, with it...
I think it goes down to the old racetrack or wherever it was put, wanting to put that thingamajigger part, whatever you call it up there.
Yeah.
Thingamajigger part.
We're on the back side, dude. You're on upper Salem, this is on Salem.
Oh, yeah.
It's the property on the other side that runs down Salem Church over there.
With it and rural at their joint.
Thingamajigger.
They were doing...
You tell us not my service.
Yeah.
But we do have water on Top Mine, so property, their property does that one, we do have it over there.
Yeah, and they're running one side of Salem Church, and we've got a line on the other side of Salem Church, but that's their service delivery through there. But I think they would have to bore under to get to it. All right.
Sorry for the confusion.
Next item on the agenda is the follow-up discussion on the capital improvement special tax districts. This was one we brought into the work session, at our last work session, where we reviewed with council the Dawson's ordinance that was in place, essentially providing a way for private roads to have a special tax district put in place. I know we've reviewed it with council, we went back and forth, I kind of added it on one more work session so we can kind of iron out a couple of details to determine if we wanted to move forward with putting it on for a public hearing at that point in time for an ordinance for consideration. One of the items, and I think when I made the copies y'all got where I highlighted the things that I was gonna bring up in here, under the administration, the way Dawson's structure set up, the public works director is more of an administrative position, not a field position. We've got a working man in our public works director also, in trying to separate out the duties that would need to fall under whoever's in the public works field versus the administrative side of things. And I think that in that particular capacity, the applicant and the administration of who they submit all the paperwork to, what my proposal would be, that we make that our director of administrative operation, and director on the administrative, which would be Knollwood, who works directly with Kirk, to take that side of things, but in the parts where it's for inspection and going out into the field, that we keep that in place as the public works director, would be what I would propose, that we kind of divide those two things out to where the administrative side came into the administrative portion of the building, the field side stayed in the field side with the other, and he's behind me, and he's probably making faces. I'm throwing... I was looking around trying to figure out where he was in the room, and I just heard him. I think I heard his head start to explode. I did talk to him briefly about this. But that way, we're not keeping you from coming in, out of the field to work on the, just the receipt of the application, the explanation of the process, because once the paperwork's all turned in, it's verifying all the information. But then there are parts in trying to verify the cost, and so when you, when you review theirs, it references public works director, both on the administrative side and on the field side. And what I would propose that we separate those two out would be my thought, if we look at trying to prepare our version of this ordinance to put into a, you know, public hearing to discuss it. The other on the second page, which is page 2 of 7, under their definitions for qualified capital improvement projects, they have county-wide sewer projects that they work with the Dawson County Water and Sewer Authority. Since we don't have county-wide sewer in ours, I was recommending that we take the sanitary sewers portion out of that and leave the water lines, driveways, traffic control, lighting fixtures, all of the other items that they had in place to go along with the road paving. That we keep just in case those are things that needed to be included in the project cost, but eliminating that sanitary sewer portion of it. And we could always amend if there was ever a time where sanitary sewer lines were installed throughout countywide, and that would be a portion of conversation that obviously changing anywhere it references Dawson to Pickens. But the other, and this is one, we had asked the attorney a lot of questions as to how they came up with the 75% number, and it was more of an arbitrary, they knew 100% was gonna be nearly impossible to pull off. What, in my thinking, and I'm throwing this out to you guys to see how you feel, for the original application, the preliminary, just turning in the paperwork, I believe leaving 75% would be an acceptable number for them to kind of get the ball rolling, to see what the cost would be and to get those things going. But when you get further into the process, when it gets to the final submission, to be eligible for final consideration, they must, that's once they have the numbers, they know what the cost is gonna be, and all those things, I would feel more comfortable that we make that a 90% to where the majority of everybody in that community, because leaving a whole 25%, if it's 100 homes, that's 25 homeowners that, or parcel owners that then get tacked on with a special tax district that did not support it. I know that getting 100% is probably gonna be near impossible. That's just my recommendation. I don't know how you guys feel, or if y'all felt comfortable with 75%.
I mean, I like going above 75. I just don't know if 90 is as unrealistic as 100.
I'm with you. 85, 90. 75 seems low, 90 seems high, so...
Yeah, that's... 82.5.
Yeah, exactly.
82.5.
Let's go for 83%. No, and that's what's happening.
83%.
And then, and I know that, I'm jokingly, but at the same time, when we talk to them, this is the process when Dawson came up with 75. It was arbitrary to come up with, what is it? And I know we would still have the final decision at the end, and that could become a factor.
If you bumped it to like 80%, and say, and it hits 80%, then it comes to the board to review, and we have the ultimate...
Then we would have the ultimate to see, because that, that could mean one homeowner, or it could mean 100 homeowners, depending on the size of the project.
You're gonna have developments where you've got out-of-state homeowners or property owners that, but we just can't get in touch with.
Right.
Those can be something, yeah, if someone doesn't vote, do they count against the total? Or is it...
Every parcel would be...
Is it gonna be 80% of the people who vote, or 80% of homeowners?
It's basically a petition, so if you have, well, say there's 100 parcels, just for the simplicity of if there's 100 parcels that touch this project, those 100 parcels, 80% of those have to sign the petition agreeing to it. So if we were to go with 80, if we went with 75, so that would mean 80 out of 100 would have to sign the petition. The other 20, it's not required one way or the other. We would then be able to try to make sure that we've reached out to make every means necessary to reach out to who it would be before taking a final vote. But this would be just to try to provide some sense of a way for a community to reach out and move through that. If we, if we went with 80, then I would almost say we keep it the same on both the preliminary and the final, instead of saying 75 on one and 80 on the other. I would say if we went with 80, if we went higher than 80, then it may be a good idea to try to divide those two.
Still like 83.5.
It would be entertaining to put it in there. It must reach at least 83.5. But then somebody's gotta do the math to come up with, are we rounding up or down? What are we doing?
We's gonna have three kids, and this one's gonna have four.
So y'all wanna plug in an eighty is the first draft and that way we kinda get a draft into your hands before with all these corrections made in it. And then we, once you've reviewed that, we can, at a meeting, we can announce a public hearing for the following, uh, the following month.
Yeah, I like eighty or eighty five. I don't care if you want to lean higher, but.
Which one?
I I'm gonna look, if we will do eighty five, that's fine.
All right, so eighty five.
Yeah, that's fine.
We'll put that in the draft and then once we get to a public hearing, if that's something that that we can revisit it, this is just to get the draft in place. The other, um, there was one section on page five, um, and that was, they were going for a full depth reclamation on any of the projects that they were looking at, which is an extremely costly. Never, it would be nice if all of them could be FDR'd, but we understand that's gonna drive up the cost of some of these projects significantly. And so I, my recommendation would be we take that out, that we didn't require going for an FDR, cause some of these are simple resurface on someone's road. Some of them will require a lot more. But it'll be at the discretion of the public works director and the director of administration as to what their recommendation would be for fixing it once the, the cost estimates would come in. But I don't know that I would actually include that in the ordinance, that FDR would be the method for all of them, because they're not all gonna require that. There's some that it would be great, but there's some that.
I would make sure you have a footnote in there that says that at the discretion of, like, they do have, they can mandate that if if they think it's needed, but just so it's addressed, but not mandated for.
Well, it actually, right now, it it already says public works director is the one to issue the final petition and at their recommendation, so. Okay. Y'all have any other items? I know we've we've all looked at this now for a couple of months trying to go back and forth that we need to to try to include in the draft.
What about the last one about user fees anymore?
It it's just, I think that because they have a defined um impact fee in Dawson that we currently don't have at this point in time, once we get our capital improvement plan finalized, we may eventually add that in.
Okay.
So we could leave it in place now, that way if we do get the capital improvement plan and that, that way we don't have to come back and amend this ordinance, go ahead and leave it. I kinda highlighted it because of that one reason, but I think leaving it in place, that way when we do have that fee in place, would, we would be able to to get that in there. Would be my recommendation. While I'll get uh everybody on board with trying to get that draft of it together, we'll get that draft out to everyone. And once we're we're comfortable, we will then get a public hearing scheduled. And once we have a public hearing, then we'll we'll try to propose to move it through into ordinance fashion. So any other questions on that?
Yeah.
Thought it would be a good time, we're closing out the uh the audit in our June meeting, uh, Rushden will come and do the presentation of the the audit for the twenty twenty three budget year, so we'll have that audit done in June, um, which they they they're dead on track with getting it all completed on time. I think they finalized the the first portion of the hotel motel audit and they'll have the rest of it completed and ready to present to us in June. But because of that, that's kind of the transition period that you move from auditing the previous year to budgeting for the future years. So I asked Miranda if she would, uh, her and Bill have worked together on getting the the process on on paper to uh go through and discuss what the budget season's gonna look like. And you want me to talk better or you want to talk better?
It's pretty much the same schedule as I said, but you can review it.
And y'all have got a copy of it, but then starting June tenth would be the time that we would have the packets go into all the department heads and other elected to start preparing their packets to submit to the finance office. Then upon review, looking at the requests as to which ones we need to meet with individually. We'll spend the time going through, trying to meet with them individually if there's additional meetings that need to be had or the request can be within realistics. This is all working alongside waiting, uh, as we get the millage set so that we understand the millage, that that process is going on parallel to this process. So we'll work through those uh from June tenth through August sixteenth. And then starting in uh September, we'll have additional budget budget meetings, September through October with everybody to make sure their things, preparing the final draft by October the eleventh. The first progress advertisement of the budget for the public hearing would be in November the sixth, the week of November sixth. Uh, the budget availability for public viewing would start the week of November the eighteenth. And then I would actually present the budget at that November eighteenth meeting. So we'll have it advertised prior to and then the first presentation of the budget before uh the board would be on November the eighteenth. Then we would advertise again the following week for a second uh proposed budget meeting on December second. So instead of just having a work session on the second, we'd have a call meeting for the budget presentation following the work session. And then following that, we would be prepared to present it at a regular meeting in December on the sixteenth for final adoption at that point in time for votes. So that gives us the public hearings, the advertisements, all the different steps that that are necessary to make sure we're aligned with the law. But also to make sure we're working closely with the finance department, department heads and elected officials to to get a true budget presented to you at that point.
With the meetings kinda changing, we kinda had to shift it around just a little bit, but it's just about a week off from what it was last year, but it's it's about a week earlier.
And the the difference is we have to advertise a week earlier, because we're, our meetings, when they were on Thursday, we advertised the week of the meeting. Now that this shift is with the Monday meeting, it shifts when the advertisements gather for each, kinda bumped it up.
So is our first visibility to the budget gonna be at the November eighteenth as post commissioners?
Of the final draft of it, you'll be able to see the submissions from the department heads and the requested. So it just will be the final copy of the the draft budget to be presented in total of how all the pieces fit together.
That's two weeks to review a bunch of them.
As the submissions come in from the department heads, you'll be able to see the requested submissions and so that you can kinda see where it's going back and forth and how that all plugs in together.
Actually, I can send you some stuff to keep you kind of in the loop of what it's looking like and what we get at all here now.
You'll you'll be up to date. That is just the final, the final draft will be presented for the first time on November eighteenth.
Good. Thank you.
Everybody good with that? All right, next is uh, and this is just a brief discussion. This is kind of in relation to what recently occurred in Gilmer County, um, industrial zoning. One of the issues that came up before their planning commission in Gilmer recently was a crypto mine, a request for rezone into industrial zoning for a large crypto mine facility. This comes from where one got put in Murphy, North Carolina, and a tremendous amount of sound and power, because the fans apparently are very, very loud. This is a world that I'm not gonna pretend like I have a clue in to how this all plays out. But they, they've actually, several commissioners went up to Murphy to inspect where one got put in and the amount of impact it had on the the neighboring areas. Our ordinance is currently, obviously they were drafted before cryptocurrency was ever a conversation that anybody in Pickens County had ever had, I do believe. So what I'm recommending that we do at our next meeting would be to issue an oratorium on any new industrial zone properties until we're able to get the language to include on how those would be managed and any other changes that would need to occur within our industrial, whether that be specific to crypto or anything along those those state territories. So we would issue just a temporary ninety day oratorium on industrial, newly created industrial zone properties so that we can make sure our ordinances can handle the request if one comes in to, it's not to say that they're eliminated altogether, but we would be able to come up with what are the processes to make sure that we don't affect a neighborhood with, um, that would be. And it's more of a discussion. I know Gilmer, uh, Pannan had went through just prior to, and then Gilmer just recently had a five hour planning commission meeting uh with the number of neighbors that came out. So I think our planning commission would appreciate us getting ahead of this by getting this actually resolved beforehand, I'm thinking just to be ahead of the game. So if um, what we would do is just prepare for our our meeting coming up in two weeks on the agenda, a resolution that issued a moratorium so that we can get some time to get those those ordinances squared away. And that was just to bring that out in a, in a public meeting, was to put that on the agenda today. To do that, the next one is uh the discussion on Utilities Inc. proposal. We have been back and forth with Utilities Inc. for for a period of time. They've never ever formally submitted any type of a proposal, but this is the conversation surrounding the foothill shopping center in the sewer. Utilities Inc., who serves as the sewer provider in Big Canoe within that service delivery area that bought out the uh, the Big Canoe Utilities, and I'm probably not using the correct name on the the property. Years ago, what they originally submitted here was an access encroachment, just wanting to run their pipe across the the road. And you can see where the attachment there was an access encroachment to be able to run across uh Steve Tate Road between McQuay Mountain Pass and the SE Run. I sent a follow up to that saying we would need some more information before we could consider that as to what area they're trying to serve and the limitations that they might have with the the capacity that they're trying to serve. You've got a copy of the response email in in your packets essentially stating that they wanna serve the territory that is currently the foothill shopping center and the fourteen acres behind that, which is, is on neighborhood commercial at this point in time. That was their original submission. They've they've stated in here that it would be a six inch line. They would have a forced main at the beginning, but then it becomes gravity fed between there and Big Canoe of what goes through there. What I would recommend that we do at this point in time, just because we're kinda getting into a territory on service delivery with a private company, service delivery with other governments is is defined pretty clearly in law. There's not very much in in private company. Would be that we have our staff prepare the information that's been submitted along with the history of what's going on with this project and provide it to our legal counsel. So that it's reviewed by counsel and that until we get that response back from our legal counsel as to anything that's defined clearly within the law as to the requirements, and then we come back to a meeting to actually consider the approval or the denial of of their request at that point in time or any modification. And we, if if we wanna offer them something that's in between a flat no and and what they've asked for, or if we've got any other, we could get that reviewed by counsel first. Unless y'all wanna, if you wanna go ahead and throw it on the agenda for discussion, I just think that it would be wise that we have counsel review this one because the implications that it could.
I don't know what, okay.
Bring us what, what to deal with. You have thoughts?
No, I'm with you.
This came in just right as the time we were preparing the agenda to go out, so we have, we've there's a limited amount of information contained within it, but we do have the history of what all the conversations have been throughout the last couple of years that I think all of that factored in together would give them a good tool to to look at, because it is somewhat a service delivery issue, but it's somewhat not, because they're a private company and they're not another, another government. So we wanna make sure we're preparing that one correctly. So if y'all are good with that, then we'll get this sent over to Jordan Davis and have him take a look. And we'll review and do some of the legwork on the back end so that what we're providing them gives them what they need instead of getting legal hours or digging up the research. And we'll go from there on that. Do either, do you have anything that's came up since the agenda that that you need discussed in the work session?
I'm good. Thank you all.
I got one crazy one that came in Friday afternoon, not necessarily crazy, but it's the first time somebody's brought it in with a recommended solution. And it deals with noise where people are, I know each of us received constant with with shooting and neighbors shooting and different things like that. This gentleman apparently has a neighbor that's that's got a home shooting range that invites his friends over and they shoot on the weekends. And he made a proposal on Sunday limitations and holiday limitations of an ordinance that might be on there. So what I was gonna do, and this is really not for us to discuss necessarily today, but is to ask staff to reach out to some other counties and see if there are examples of any other counties that have done anything that that puts some some guardrails so that they could enjoy some peace and quiet at least on a Sunday afternoon. I don't know if that exists and I don't know the legality and I don't think we're at a point of of necessarily researching the legality, because we're not trying to infringe on people's gun rights, but at the same time, trying to make sure others have peace and quiet.
Somebody's good to shoot.
I know, that's, a lot of them are gonna say, and so that's what makes me a little bit nervous as to how maybe limiting the amount of time that consecutive time, um, but this is more just a review at this point in time. Because if you make it for one type of noise, the people that are currently calling and complaining about helicopters flying near the airport and the military coming up here to fuel their helicopters and it's those other noises come into play as well, so. I'm I'm gonna ask staff just kinda reach out and see if we can find some examples of of others that have something similar in place. And that way we can then get that potentially on the table for review at an upcoming work session. But that came in late Friday and and I just kinda wanna throw that out there as as a request that's been brought to us to take a look at.
Also curious how that would implicate an existing gun range. It's.
Well, I think profile, I think I had an approved range that's got the license that's gone through all the process and I'm probably, I think those are not gonna be included. They would have to be exempted from it because that's part of their their grandfather. This is dealing more with the people that have built a home, uh, a home shooting course. And it apparently is happening a little bit more and more frequently in some parts of the county. There's ordinances in terms of it has to be in a safe manner, but there's not in terms of the amount of noise that it creates. So um, we're just gonna take a look and try to do some research on it now. And that's, I think, we owe that to the citizens that are complaining to at least try to see, is there a way that we can do something that is realistically enforceable without infringing on rights at the same time? So, cause that's a delicate line to to tip to. Through there. That's the only other one I had that's came in since we met, or since we prepared the agenda. We've got our meeting in two weeks from today, uh, our regular voting meeting, and we'll be back in our regular full size room. I like how the first time we move into a conference room is when we have the largest crowd that shows up. That's gotta part of the course. But unless y'all have anything else within the journey, we'll move on.
Yeah.
All right, we'll adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.